Good evening, Chair. Calls to order Legislative Session Day 24-017. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilmember Jan Giordano.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and never be any justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we gather here today with a shared purpose: to serve our community with wisdom, compassion, and integrity; grant us the clarity to see the needs of those we represent; the courage to make just decisions; and the humility to listen to diverse perspectives. May our deliberations be guided by respect for one another and a commitment to the common good; help us work together in harmony and to lead with open hearts and minds; let us remember and honor those who have sacrificed their lives for our country; protect our EMS, fire, police, and military; their bravery and commitment inspire us to serve our community with dedication and integrity. Amen.
Agenda Item Number Four: Presentation and Proclamations. We have none. Five: Consideration of Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nominations. Executive Appointment, Chairperson for Hartford Center Board of Directors. Mr. Bennett.
Mr. President, I move to approve the appointment of Kristen Klein as Chairperson to the Hartford Center Board of Directors.
You have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointment of Kristen Klein. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Six: Special Presentations. Fiscal Year 25 Citizen Budget Advisory Board Report. Mr. Andish. Mr. Tibbs.
I've got a few friends that need a little bit.
Mr. Schertzler.
That's the three of us that are here.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Whenever you're ready.
Thank you, thank you. Yep, we just wanted to first acknowledge the Citizens Budget Advisory Board this year. Three of us are in attendance here this evening, which is myself, Andrew Andish, we have Brooke Schertzler, and Mr. Bob Tibbs, and then we also have Gloria Moon, Eric Rebert, Brad Stover, and we were excited to welcome Kevin McKinney this year, who was a phenomenal member of our team, a bipartisan team, I would think, this year, the way that this council set up, which was very, it was good. It was good to hear the perspective of everyone. It was good to go through that process, the hearings, hearing, concern, kind of everywhere. So, we're going to do this a little differently this year, and just kind of have a little understanding of what we are, and then just kind of go into where we truly see this going in the future with a little bit of dialogue. So, good evening, Council President Vincetti and members of the Hartford County Council. We are proud to have been appointed to the Citizens Budget Advisory Board for Fiscal Year 25. We feel it's important for the citizens of Hartford County to know we are a board consisting of many different backgrounds, with all knowledge of the county budgeting process. Our members are experienced in agriculture, emergency services, local governments, business, education, legal, and finance. The Fiscal Year 25 budget brought a fiscal challenge described by the administration, where revenue projection percentages were reduced. The county is said to be bracing for a decrease in revenue that has been projected by the spending affordability report. The county has no change in tax rates for Fiscal Year 25. We listened to four days of testimony from various department heads, met in private, to discuss various matters relating to the Fiscal Year 25 budget. During those discussions, we created this list that we now present to you this evening that we felt was more appropriate than ever to discuss this list with you, along with the letter sent to the county executive dated May 23rd. It is our hope with you that you will take into consideration our annotations as you move along in the budgeting process. The major concerns or major items that we brought up, and this is voted on by everybody that was at that meeting, which had six of us in attendance that evening, and then there were other supplemental reports that have been filed as well, or will be filed by each member of the board that chooses to do so. But, the majority of our compromises came around these major bullet points, that we were happy to see the Joppa Community Center moving forward as promised. EMS and ambulance costs are more than are being let on. No increases for the Board of Education, library, Hartford Community College, forcing them to use the majority of their fund balance or cut costs. The use of fund balances, or what happens if all of they are used up in the future, is a concern of this board. No additional funding for our community organizations, such as the ARC and other treatment facilities that have also been left to pick up where there's not a fund balance available. It's organizations that are counting on raises, counting on bringing on people, bringing back people from COVID, now that organizations are starting to really pick up more of a No real plan in economic development after being asked multiple times. No plans provided to raise revenue, especially if tax increases are off the table. Are we going to be able to continue to secure a AAA bond rating? The lack of communication between departments and executive is not sustainable. What happened to the 5% raise across the board, and what is spooking them in the income tax revenue? And that includes where the projections would be at when we get that May drop that's supposed to either, it's out now or coming at this point in time. The executive not showing up and having these statements be read by a director of the administration. Capital and no true central precinct outside of the project that will cost hundreds of millions of dollars, which is not sustainable to anybody as well. And then the Eva Mar site purchased for a new school not currently in our CIP at all. We would love to sit here and talk to you about each department that's going up or down, but that's not the year that we had this year. It was a year that was flat, it was a year that we did that budget, you know, in the past. I have the opportunity to work with other municipalities that don't feel as bearish as I think we feel here, and I think that's up to the administration to make those decisions at this point in time, and we respect that decision because that is who was elected and that the administration put around them is. The sole decision of the budget rests on them, and as we all know, we cannot change revenue numbers. It has to be changed through cuts, and then even where those cuts come from are determined from, you know, are already predetermined as to where they'd have to go at this point in time. So, I'm going to open up to Brooks to see if he wanted to say a few words on some of the things that he has, and then any questions on what our concerns are would be, you know, again, and Mr. Tibbs as well, if he'd like to say anything.
Now, just to echo some of the discussion, I think the notion of a flat budget, and as Andrew said, not a lot to digest. Again, we've already digested.
Hold that mic closer.
Sorry. Better? Not a lot to digest from a flat budget. Obviously, we did a lot of digesting last year. The main changes, obviously, being EMS, and I think Andrew touched on that, the long-term cost of that, I think, is unwritten at this point. It's hard to say where the bottom is on that, especially the testimony giving by the volunteer fire companies, I think, is a precursor to a possible expansion at some point. We put in our report, the sub-report, that's easily $100 million line item in the future. How are we going to prepare? And as Andrew said, revenue, I think, is something that, you know, it shouldn't just be projected, although none of us can see the future, so no one can make a good production, you know, it's anybody's best guess, and I think we all respect that. But when we start looking at the anti-growth path that it feels like we're on, and we might, you know, be wrong, but it looks like we're spending more time worrying about what's being spent, instead of how we're going to grow revenue. And that, to me, is a long-term concern, especially with stagflation. And my report for District B is centered on that. My concern is that if we do go into that recession, whether it's this year, next year, or five years from now, it won't be like the recession of 2008. Inflation is not going to disappear, and it'll be similar to what it was in the 70s, when you had prices going up, gas lines, unemployment, you'll be in the worst possible position. You won't be able to raise revenues through growth, and through growth with taxes only makes inflation worse. So it becomes kind of a circular spiral backwards. So, to build that pipeline of revenue, I think, is a key discussion for the council with the county executive, to have a clear vision for how we are going to grow revenue over time, because it will never be cheaper in the future to pay teachers, deputies, county workers. It will not get cheaper into the future. So, to say that fiscal conservatism is cutting, that's part of it. You know, good management is key, but it's also about regonomics, laissez-faire, free markets, capitalism, property rights, and growing your tax base. So if we don't believe in tax increases, we have to come up with revenue, just like a business has to come up with revenue.
The main point that I wanted to bring up was the EMS system. We spent basically $40 million last year. We projected 22.9, I think, is the right figure for this coming year, just for operating. It's, as a volunteer for 60 years, it's hard to see this coming. I don't know that we're getting a better system for it. I think we may be getting something that's a little quicker, but it's costing a lot of money, and we have no way of funding it, other than the general fund. Maybe possibly down the way, another 9/11 tax put onto it for our, just for the operating of the EMS system. That's a big, big part of this county's budget, is the way I see it, because I don't think that we have looked into how much overtime is going to have to be required to fund this, and how many people are going to have to be employed. So that's a big concern that I have. Thank you.
I think just to sum up is that we understand the challenges. I think that the bills that we're pushing down the road are adding up, and they're going to continue to add up, and there has to be a plan, like any business, like any household, there has to be a plan. And that's, I think, what was challenging for us this year, is to not hear what that plan's going to be, outside of revenue already being there, or projections being there. And that is not an answer that we were able to obtain this year, or I don't think any of us sitting here were able to. So I think for us, when you look at blueprint, you've got to get every teacher to $60,000, and you have to get all of the mandated, unfunded mandates that are out there that are going to sit in front of us, and we, I believe we have to fiscal year 27 to get that into place before you're out of compliance, and out of compliance means you don't get your state money, well, therefore, everything falls apart, it collapses. So, that's a concern in every municipality, that's not a Hartford County thing, that's everywhere in the state right now. So, the concern for us is, if this is the budget that we have this year, and this is the budget that will be voted on, then the discussions that we had that ended this budget session need to start now for the next one. And I think that's what we can challenge each one of you to take on, is that the work really starts now for next year, if this is how far behind we are. So, we thank you guys for your attention this evening, and throughout this whole entire budget process, working with you guys is an honor for us. There is only seven of us in the county that get to have this honor, and we don't take it lightly, and there's a lot of time that goes in behind the scenes, us working with you all. Council President, the amount of times that we go back and forth, and, you know, Brooks with Aaron, it's a situation where we're doing this for our citizens as well, and for you guys, and it's something that we are as concerned about as tax-paying citizens here in Hartford County. So, thank you.
Andrew, let me thank you again for the years of service that you've provided me, my office, and the citizens, as you just spoke to. It's tremendously valuable to me to better understand the inner workings of the budget as we look at it together. And, you know, I always say, we're behind the eight ball right out of the gate, because we get the budget on the 15th, and we start our work sessions a week later, let's say. So, the service that you provide us, like I said, is invaluable, so. But I also want to recognize the fact that I have had a couple of conversations with the county executive, I've made him aware of the concerns that my colleagues have, the interest where my colleagues are and I are, as far as items in the budget that we want to see addressed. We did put together a letter, we did send it to the administration, they did acknowledge receiving the letter. We had some conversation this past Friday in the afternoon, the county executive and I, and I'm patiently waiting to hear back from him now. So, from there, I'm not sure where we go, but my colleagues and I are ready to make the next step, whatever that is. And with that, I'd like to open up to my colleagues. Mr. Guthrie, and we'll start right at the end and come down.
Your comments on EMS, I believe it's where ambulance service is also, and of course, what we had going there was, I believe, at the time, for 266,000 people in our county, we had 20 ambulances, which I couldn't believe, and that's where, that's where a lot of that cost went, the buying or getting 20 more ambulances. Now, that's one problem, but the other problem is, you know, you've got to have people in them, you know, qualified people, and so that's where all that money went. Oddly enough, it caught my eye, because my mother-in-law, who's now just turned 98, she lives with us, and one night, we're having dinner, and she had a stroke, and when we got to her, she was sitting there at her table, we got to, we called 911 right away, and they sent paramedics right away, got her at least settled down, and they called the ambulance to take her to, of course, the hospital up here was crowded, so we went down to, down Route 40. And the ambulance backs up into my driveway, and I'm out there giving them direction, and that was great, and come in and said Baltimore County. So, I got to baptism right there, I said, you know, and they said, they don't have any in any county. So, that's how I got my vote.
Well, and I think we're obviously for what happened in this situation. I mean, it was not going to be there if we didn't, but I think at that point, and maybe this is a cost that everyone's still trying to figure out, and that's a fair assumption, is that when you take on something like an ambulance corps, yeah, you're not just taking on the equipment, the assets at that point, you're taking on the people that have to now be staffed at every single location that those run out of, the training, the certification, everything at that point. So, there are costs associated with that, but we do need to get a handle on what those costs will be annually, because that is truly taking whatever growth that we had, and it's truthfully, that's where it's going. I mean, there's no other way around it, outside of the 1% raise and various other little things that we saw. So, when we do have that, I think that there's just an idea of, like, that communication, even that, just having that back and forth there and saying, yes, this is going to cost, it's going to hurt, we're going to have to pull from, that's the communication I think we're craving this year. And last year, if this is when it started, because it's kind of been a multi-year situation, you had to do the capital side first, then you had to move it into operation, it's just, it took away from everything else. Everybody else that's sitting in the room, the sheriff's office is sitting in the room, our friends at the ARC, and organizations that, little dollar values help incredibly, our kids, you know, in the schools, and our older kids at the college that now have to find, the state's not giving any additional funding here. I mean, those monies are tapped at this point in time, and that's a fair, the fair assumption that the state is going to, Robbie's seeing it with these revenue projections, I mean, the state is going to do what the state needs to do. We've seen it in, school projects have been delayed eight years. I mean, how do you build something over eight years, a school, and then say, we're going to build not one at one time? So, I think that, at the end of the day, we just have to have an honest conversation. I think that's what this is, is, okay, if that's where we're sitting tonight, what is that blank check going to look like come three years from now? Going to Brooks's point, what if that expands into other things? Then now you're talking about, it's more than a 911 fee. And I appreciate the.
I've noticed the state's raising a lot of their fees, I've noticed that, but I also, just closing, I want to thank you all for, you all volunteered to do this work, it's during the day and all, and I know you had other things to do, and thank Maya, Gloria, which is fantastic. I'm sure she had a few things to say.
Absolutely.
So, thank you all for your volunteer service.
And then before I move on to Mr. Penman, I think it's important to say, for our citizens to understand, that the call volume has increased tremendously. People are using medic units to go to the hospital for regular visits to a doctor office, let's say. So, and I know that for a fact, I had 10 years of experience in the back of one of those medics, and I can't imagine how they provide the service that they provide today, and, I mean, just Bel Air alone, probably 30 calls a day, you know, somewhere in that neighborhood. Mr. Penman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Andish, Mr. Tibbs, Mr. Schertzler, thank you. If you could pass on my appreciation to the other committee members, because you guys are an incredible resource to us. Mr. Schertzler is an incredible resource to me, with his knowledge that he brings forward, insight, and just, you know, really just diving into the books and trying to understand the budget, because it's super complex, as you all know. And I'm proud of the collaborative effort that we all have pretty much come together, that you all have aided, to where we were able to produce a report, an analysis, an evaluation, and send it over to the executive's administration. So, thank you all for that. But I did have some just follow-up questions. I'm glad you talked about the strategy of revenue growth going forward, or lack of strategy, and I hope, over the next year, that the county, we can all work together to find what that strategy is, and have that growth without raising fees and without raising taxes, because that just helps inflation if we do that. Next question I have, though, is, I know we talked about it last year, as far as the citizen advisor budget group meeting periodically over the year, because, and I think, you know, one of the questions that we were faced with was, is this a timing issue, or is this an actual budget issue, right? And that may come to fruition here in a couple of days, when the May dispersment is released, and then the following, the June dispersment. So, I look forward to that conversation, to kind of see what it looks like, because those are normally, what I can gather, the largest dispersments that the county gets. So I look forward to that evaluation. And, you know, I just, I was, it was hard to track down during the budget hearings about fund balance, and what, how much we need in fund balance to maintain a AAA bond rating, which is important to all of us, to make sure we have that lower interest rate. So, it was a moving target. I just wanted to kind of see from you, do you have any further analysis on kind of what that might look like? Because really, in the grand scheme, if we're trying to resource different funds, that fund balance is the very question that needs to be decided first.
Yeah, I'm trying to go back a little bit and answer some of those, and then move my way into the fund balance, and then I'll let anybody else that wants to chime in on that as well. A, we certainly, I think we've got a good group this year. I really think that it is a bipartisan group. I mean, that has been something that's been exciting. We have all been, got to give Mr. Tibbs and everybody, we have been meeting virtually, we have been, you know, so I think, to your credit of, will this group stay together and be a focal point, I think there's a lot of open things that we'd like to review, you know, and to the point of just for the data. We don't want to say, we're not here to do victory laps, or to point fingers, or to say, I hope the revenue comes in stronger, because that helps everybody. I don't want it to see it come down, but if it does, then that's something that we will address, and we will have another conversation with this council, if we really think that that's what needs to happen. So, to that point, I think that we will do a better job with that this year, especially with the multitude of things going on around the state right now, that are really kind of driving public support to be, you know, having that voice heard. So, I think that that's something that we will certainly work with the council staff on, to maybe be here quarterly, or, you know, after certain things are released, and we challenge you guys to ask us those questions, or the things that you'd like us to review and continue as a group, and individually as well. So, certainly something that I would want to commend this group on, the work that we did this year for the type of budget that we were going into. The timing question, I think a lot of this is timing. The budget season is a whole timing mechanism of itself. I think that Robbie, the treasurer, would admit to the same thing, because you have to, you have to hit that 4/15 date. Some counties are 4-1, they have to get a budget out, and then the state goes back, changes things on you nine times out of 10, and he's stuck with the budget that he's presented you all, and then we have to deal with it on the amendment side of things. So, I like that they have the appropriate amount of time to at least get the budget out to this council, but it doesn't leave a lot of time open for us to get to this June vote, that we desperately need to, so that everybody, the school board can essentially do their part at the end. But I think the one biggest timing piece that always has been a point of emphasis for myself, is how much fund balance you roll from a year that's ending into the year that you're about to begin. So there's this, like, sweeping motion of, like, the last day of the year, if you shut the lights off on June 30th, anything not spent is going to just drain right out of there and go into fund balance, essentially. There's other nuances that happen inside of there as well. But then we have this, well, we're going to use some of that fund balance to now fund the next Fiscal Year 25 budget. So, you'd never get a clear picture when we get down to the, you know, the various audit reports that come out, when you say, A, you have restricted, so you have certain things that go into a certain fund that are there, enterprise funds, or Stormwater has been one that's been heavily used, but that true unrestricted fund balance is always a rolling savings account, is the best way to describe it. So your checking account is what you use to pay your bills, and that is your operating account, and that is what we're here budgeting. So we don't spend enough time on fund balance, because by the time we get the actual true number, it's already been rolled into another type of, now, some of it has stayed, and that's the number that we get. So if I wanted to portray a fund balance number, I could do whatever number you asked me to do on the date that you asked me to do it, because I can just roll more into the budget or find out where we want to be. Now, it's a little bit, again, of a moving target timing issue, because you're not going to get all your revenue until you're done, so you still have to wait until that June 30th. So, fund balance could be higher than we've talked about in here, it's really not been quantified, it's been just kind of what we had last year, but all the data we're looking at last year is from June 30th of last year, that audit report that was provided in October, I believe. So, I think for me, that is what goes into the basis of your bond rating, because you have to leave, like, I'm not in the, I don't visit New York and go into the bond rating meetings or anything like that, just like most of us don't. But, when you're looking at the true number of what you need to maintain that bond rating, I think somebody knows the answer to that question, councilman, and I think that it's been, it's been thrown around, 60 has been thrown around, 100's been thrown around, I think 150's been thrown around. It depends on what exactly we have allocated to each one of these funds, and how that bond rating agency looks at it. The bond, you know, there's different companies out there even, too, that will do different types of ratings, so obviously, you kind of go with the one that looks the best when you're trying to sell them, but truthfully, it's, if we're going to go into what we're saying with an inflation stagflation situation, it's going to be what people are willing to pay, which is going to ultimately control your interest value at the end of the day. So even preserving that number, I think that if you were to turn around and do $5 million of amendments somewhere, I don't think that's going to come into your fund balance problem at all, nor do I think that would come into your bond rating. But again, if I'm way off and way wrong, and the numbers that are about to come out don't dictate that answer, then we will get that answer, and I think that's how we can counteract the problem, which is, keep an eye on it as these come out and have these conversations. Do you want to add anything? I know your fund balance is your thing.
No, I mean, Mr. Shandless and I have had great conversations, and I appreciate all of his sharing during the meetings that he has to put up with my questions, but, because it was something that I had to learn about, and when we looked at fund balance in 2014, it was roughly $72 million. In 2022, in the last report, it was 211 million. So, you know, I think, for me, I needed that context. It did go down in 2023, it's now closer to 174, give or take, but you can kind of see that trend was extremely strong. The county was, you know, basically, revenue was well above what it needed, and it was building it up. Now we're on the opposite end of that curve. The comptroller just spoke at a luncheon I was at last week the other day, and she was pointing out that she feels that GDP has started to wane since 2017. We didn't see that here, we might be seeing that now. It gets into that growth cycle mentality of what phase of growth is Hartford County in, are we on a, you know, we've been called now a more developed county, a wealthy county, but a county that is struggling to find that next leg to get a 10% growth, that we experienced for over a decade. And, again, part of that's inflation, it's eating up your true growth rate. And so when you start to look at fund balance, I think all of us agree with Mr. Shandless, we do not want to pledge it all every year, and be redlined, and all of a sudden have mid-year cuts. I don't think any of us on the council are advocating for that either. I do think it becomes a question and answer, to your point, Mr. Penman, about how much do we really need, because when we start earmarking that money, we also have to be honest that we're not going to spend it every year. We can prepare to close the landfill and watershed at the same time. If we do fall into that scenario where both of those lightning bolts strike at the same time, I don't know what we would, I don't think we would automatically spend almost $50 million all at once. So, again, we would use bonds or some other mechanism, I don't think we would cash fund that type of operation. So, if we are experiencing slower growth, those types of tactical discussions have to be, I think, made transparent, to give you all a better understanding of when constituents come to you and say, why are you earmarking these funds for that type of event, when I need payroll now, you know, or I need EMS now, or fire, or whatever, or a precinct, or deputies pay because Baltimore County's taking, you know, the next leg. You know, that competition is not going to go away. So I do think, you know, to Mr. Andish and Mr. Penman's point, you know, that discussion has to be made more clear. The other thing that's been a huge point of contention is. The other thing that's been a huge point of contention is the local reserve. And I understand that we don't have access to that money, you know, in the truest form, but I do think it's an honest conversation that has to, again, be had, that the, we sent a letter to the state, and they've provided a report back to us, and affirmed that that is our money, roughly 120 million, that is in arrears, and that will continue to happen. Another timing issue, the comptroller touched on it a bit, she is holding back a little bit more, she's uncertain on some of the timing issues for her end as well, she doesn't want to underpay or overpay a county, that affects Mr. Sandless and the administration. So, I think we're all sympathetic to that, but I think it gets back to, you know, we are not on a razor's edge yet, so I think those, this brinkmanship tactics of budgeting are starting to really hurt, and as Mr. Pennman said, a discussion is definitely warranted with all stakeholders. And just be honest, what does it take to keep the AAA? How much do we really need in reserve, and what else can we work with? I think that's the, that's where we have to get. Otherwise, you will have to raise revenues. Bottom line, fees and taxes will have to be on the table, so.
And then, just one follow-up question, I'm not expecting an answer, just maybe for future consideration of the Citizen Budget Advisor Group. Bill 2416, which could increase the authority and balance the budget powers of Hartford County, I think it's critical to have a discussion with your group about it, because we talk about the budget, you talk about the budget, and, you know, increasing, decreasing, and this would give, you know, the council more authority to do that. So, I look forward to having further conversation. I know we have a public hearing coming up on June 11th, but even collaborative with your group, kind of what they're feeling and senses on that, and we're, as we're doing across the council as well. So, with that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Janjordano?
Thanks, gentlemen. I think you guys have answered a lot of information, given us a lot of information, so appreciate that. Appreciate you guys being in here with us, sitting, listening, and asking all the questions. I know it's tough, and then you guys go back, and obviously, you have your meetings and inputs, and I know, Brooks, you put a lot, and Andrew, and Mr. Tibbs, and I do talk to Eric. I do want to bring up, I understand, Mr. Tibbs, with EMS and the cost, the other thing that alerted, was alert to me, was the fire department coming in saying that they don't foresee in the future it being an all-volunteer system. That, more than anything, I think, just scares me to death of the cost of that and where the money comes from. And I just wasn't expecting that, and wasn't expecting him to say it's probably going to happen sooner than later, so I don't know how we prepare for that, but I certainly have thought about it. I'm seeing, one side, I'm seeing income tax, payroll taxes going up, but on the other side, I'm seeing expenses for other items going up, you know, obviously, you know, my business, I've seen 30% to 40% increase that I said was going to happen. After three years, everything catches up, but you're seeing, you know, the restaurants slowing down, I'm hearing from them, I'm hearing from some other businesses. Construction, obviously, slowing down, I insure a lot of construction people, not as busy as they were. Most of them, that they're working on is repair work, fixing infrastructure, everything, which, there's a ton of work, but not a lot of new construction. But we also know that if you build new houses, it also costs us money for those new houses. So, I don't know, you know, the benefit of, you know, spending a lot of money, having a lot of infrastructure, homes and everything being built, of where it costs us money. And then, as you build these, and you increase your population, then you have to build these schools. And we know these schools are not cheap, you know, we know they're, you know, 80 million, 100 million, I think, you know, I think the one that's going to be off of 543 if they build it, I think we've heard the price tag, it's, you know, it's 100 million plus. So, you know, but anyway, so I thank Aaron for some of his questions, I'm sure somebody else might have that, but I don't want to beat a dead horse and keep asking you guys the same thing, so I appreciate it.
Well, and I think you hit on something that, we are listening to Treasury, and Robbie, and Mr. Sandless, and his team, we, we're not here to say that he's wrong. I'm not saying in any way that he is wrong. I'm just saying that if we need to, and I, the job that they deal with, the job that the county executive deals with, is tough. You have to have the crystal ball, the rest of us are just watching and observing. So, I think you hit on something where, with EMS, with, they're, they're feeling the same nightmares that we're feeling with that, and we're just speculating on how to handle it at this point in time. So, I think things like that are contagious. When you start to bring in one entity, everybody else gets the same itch, and I think that you'll see that in different municipalities, because now that's like, that's been a very metropolitan thing to do, is to have a city fire department, right? Because there's a lot more paying people in the city to be able to offset those costs. When you take that out to rural America, you're changing the political landscape and the financial landscape of your municipality overnight. And without warning, sometimes, that's what I think happened in this case. I think there was a slight, like, this could happen, and then all of a sudden, it was just dumped in their lap. And that's, that's fair to bring up, that it's not probably the way that they expected the first few years to go with that. Maybe we knew kind of it was coming, but now that price tag side, going back to what Councilman Guthrie was talking about, we do need to, we got to have a handle on that. And then, if we're already starting to talk about the next big one that we have to deal with, what does that look like? So, I think that that's a valid point that's brought up, that we share the same sentiment and share the work that needs to be done. I mean, there's just ideas and plans, and I think that's what we're trying to communicate this evening, is that that planning, that communication, starting now, is helpful, even in a hypothetical world. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Yes, again, I want to thank you for your work. And, Mr. Tibbs, I appreciate you being my buzzer advisory.
Ms. Sadows?
Thank you. I would like to thank all of you for all of your efforts and hard work. I know it's time-consuming, and I appreciate that. I think throughout the whole process, my biggest concern was, there wasn't really any sort of clear strategy or path on what are we going to do to broaden our tax base for our citizens, because that's probably the best choice. But through all of the discussions, there was never really a strategy given from economic development, and that's concerning. But I don't know if you would feel the same way, or...
So, we don't have the land capabilities, per se, on 95 that other counties we've seen, bringing Amazons in, Great Wolf Lodge, things like that, that broaden a base in a different way. I think we've done it a lot here through development in regards to single-family, and to an extent, communities, and with that, the challenges that we already discussed, bringing in water, and bringing in other capital infrastructure that needs to happen, schools. So, I share the same sentiment that you share. I think that we have seen, I believe there's a plan in place, I'll put that out there tonight, I believe there's a plan, because I believe that, I have to believe that, for the government that we've elected. So, I am as anxiously waiting that plan as we go, and to see where that's at, and I'm going to give the benefit of the doubt until we don't see that, to where that conversation might start to change, especially as you see other political landscapes changing across the state and across the country. I mean, we're in the middle of a general election year. There's a, maybe not a big one for Hartford County, but it's a big one elsewhere. So, I think that having that communication open up would be a great first step, just have that visibility with our leaders, and to be able to share these concerns, and not have to be invited to the county council to do so, you know, or a public hearing that is, which we commend all of the citizens that showed up for your public hearings. I mean, they came out and shared the same concerns that they had, and that was their night that they had a voice. We are lucky enough to sit in here for four days, and also have this opportunity tonight to speak to you one-on-one, and all of you one-on-one as we go through the process. So, I, I share the same, I would agree that the two gentlemen next to me share the same thought process, which is, we've got to have something if this is where we're headed.
Right. Well, thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Sadows. Mr. Bennett? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Schertzler?
No, I was just going to add to that, I agree with you on that question or statement. I think also, we had some good discussions during the meetings about that, with economic development, in terms of tastes, changing in the marketplace, creativity for revenue, whether it was the ADU legislation, whether it's Airbnb legislation, where it supports tourism, Mr. Guthrie has talked a lot about hotels, but there's also the Airbnb option. And we also have to look at the demographic of our county. It is a older county, if you will, and that will change over time, but in terms of aging in place, there is revenue to be had there with that. It's benefits to the citizens and benefits to the taxpayer and the government itself. And I think we have to look at the areas of growth that have succeeded, which is, you know, Aberdeen is doing a tremendous job redeveloping itself. You don't have to expand, there's old stuff inside of our county that probably can be redone, whether it's the towns, or whether it's the 40 corridor. There should be, in my opinion, instead of raising fees and taxes, there should be tax incentives for redevelopment, to try and spur that growth, a more capitalistic mindset of how do we get people to pour money into that area and get that tax base raised. And we have to honor the tastes of the next generation, which sadly, with housing being as expensive as it is, apartments are not only a taste for people, because they want to live, walk, eat, and be in a small area. That may not be everybody's taste, but it is a more modern taste. And they are coming one way or another, and I think we have to be strategic where they go, and we can't just say, not in my backyard, because it is a tax base, it is a working base, it's our waiters, our waitresses, our first-start job, not everybody starts at the top of the ladder, and those income taxes are now going to Baltimore County. They work here, and then they go home and sleep in Baltimore County, and they get that share of the income tax. So, yes, I think there has to be a broader strategy. We don't have to till up every piece of land to do it, but we do have to be critical about it. And again, the investment in the Aberdeen area, a big reason for the precinct, central precinct, you're talking about citizen growth, you know, that has a cost, and safety and capitalism is obviously one of the pillars. To have a good economy, you have to have a safe economy, so I would agree.
Thank you, Mr. Schertzler. Mr. Bennett? Mr. Tibbs has, I'm sorry, Mr. Tibbs?
On the economic development part, as everybody kind of agrees, we need to have the economic development. Unfortunately, we've got an awful lot of open buildings on the Route 40 corridor that we need to get some people into, and rather than expanding out into the rural areas of the county, we certainly should do that, where we have water and sewage already in place, not being used, and that would present more income to the county, in my opinion. So, I think that's where we need to hit for the economic development. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tibbs. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Thank you all so much. I know Kevin and I had several late nights where we went through the budget together. It's a big job, and it's a huge volunteer role you all take on. And the past two years, I've learned so much working from, working with you all, especially those of you who've done this for many years. So, thank you. And I just want to reiterate what you all shared. I hope that there's a plan and that we hear that plan, because there's three options, right? There's raise taxes and fees, there's grow the economy, and the third option is cut services. And I don't think anybody wants that to be the choice that's made, but we just need to hear out loud what we're going to do to make sure that's not the choice that we're making moving forward. And I just want to reiterate, you know, there's a lot of big line item parts of the budget that get a lot of point of the conversation, the sheriff's office, the schools, but I hope that, you know, and I said this to the county executive when I met with him, you can make a mountain out of peanuts, you know, if we catch a lot of the small things and do the small things right, that helps make a lot of people feel well about the budget. So, I hope they're looking at things like the $60,000 to the ARC, as possible amendments that they could send over, without taking away everyone's colas, and dissolving Parks and Rec, and so on, that, you know, those little things that we can do right to take care of people. I hope that they'll be sending that to us before the end of June, so that we can take care of those things. So, thank you.
I think we share that. We would like to see some of the, at least, at the very least, some of the little things that, like you just said, create way more benefit. I have the privilege of actually seeing the ARC in action every day at work, and it is an amazing thing. And I know how far a little goes, and they do a phenomenal job. And there's, that story can be told for 20, 30 different organizations, I don't want to just call out one. Our treatment facilities, same way, the amount of work that they do, day in and day out, that they do for very, very, very little money. I think that if we could at least start there, and go back and look at some of those little things, that it would go a long way. And I 100% share your sentiment, and going on to, it's hard to jump into this group and hit the ground running, and Mr. McKinney certainly did a phenomenal job of that. I mean, he was a very valuable member of this board, all of us were. And this is, going back all the way to Councilman Pennman's point, I think this will be a board that you'll hear from again before the end of the year.
Thank you.
We thank you guys.
So, as I sit here tonight, I hear your interest, your passion, your institutional knowledge, your desire to stay involved, and we can't thank you enough for that. So, thank you again.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your presentation. You'll be hearing from me tomorrow.
Sure, I will, sir.
Agenda item number seven, approval of minutes, public hearing, May 21st, 2024, legislative date 24-016, May 21st, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions, we have none. Nine, introduction of bills, we have none. Ten, introduction and consideration of amendments, we have three memorandum of change to Resolution 01224, fiscal year 25, capital improvement program. Mr. Janjordano?
Council President, move to approve memorandum of change 1-3 to Resolution 01224.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved and seconded to approve the memorandum of change. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Of course, aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sadows?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Being seven votes in affirmative, zero in negative, the memorandum of change to Resolution 01224, fiscal year 25, capital improvement program is hereby approved. Mr. Janjordano, please read Amendments 1 through 27 for Bill 24-014. I will acknowledge that, based on council recommendation, Amendments 28 and 29 have been put on hold.
Amendments 1-27 to Bill 24-14, annual budget appropriation ordinance, introduced by Council President Vincetti at the request of the county executive. Amendment number one, on page 35 and line 12, strike $5,500,000 and substitute $5,912,773,000. Strike, in parentheses, $5,500,000, and substitute, in parentheses, $5,912,773. In parentheses, to reallocate $412,773 of prior bonds. Amendment number two, on page 37, between lines 17 and 18, insert the following, Bakerfield ES Chiller replacement, in parentheses, $412,773. In parentheses, to add the Board of Education Capital Project Bakerfield ES Chiller replacement. Amendment number three, on page 35 and line 12, strike, in parentheses, $5,500,000 and substitute $5,704,270. In parentheses, to reallocate $204,270 of prior bonds. Amendment number four, on page 37, between lines 24 and 25, insert the following, Meadowvale ES, in parentheses, $204,270. In parentheses, to add the Board of Education Capital Project Meadowvale ES. Amendment number five, on page 35 and line 12, strike, in parentheses, $5,500,000 and substitute, in parentheses, $5,619,149. In parentheses, to reallocate $119,149 of prior bonds. Amendment number six, on page 37, between lines 25 and 26, insert the following, roof replacement Bakerfield ES, in parentheses, $119,149. In parentheses, to add the Board of Education Capital Project Roof Replacement Bakerfield ES. Amendment number seven, on page 35 and line 12, strike, in parentheses, $5,500,000 and substitute, in parentheses, $5,707,190. In parentheses, to reallocate $207,190 of prior bonds. Amendment number eight, on page 37, between lines 25 and 26, insert the following, roof replacement CEO building, in parentheses, $207,190. In parentheses, to add the Board of Education Capital Project Roof Replacement CEO building. Amendment number nine, on page 35 and line 12, strike, in parentheses, $5,500,000 and substitute, in parentheses, $6,35,281. In parentheses, to reallocate $535,281 of prior bonds. Amendment number 10, on page 37, between lines 25 and 26... Amendment number 10 on page 37 between lines 25 and 26, insert the following, roof replacement HDG Elementary School in parentheses $535,281. In parentheses, to add the Board of Education Capital Project roof replacement HDG Havre de Grace Elementary School. Amendment number 11 on page 35 and line 12, strike in parentheses $5,500,000 and substitute In parentheses, to reallocate $527,837 of prior bonds. Amendment number 12 on page 37 between lines 25 and 26, insert the following, Swan Creek HVAC in parentheses $527,837. In parentheses, to add the Board of Education Capital Project Swan Creek HVAC. Amendment number 13 on page 35 and line 12, strike in parentheses $5,500,000 and substitute $5,475,000. In parentheses, to reallocate $25,000 of prior bonds. Amendment number 14 on page 37 and line 17, strike $500,000 and substitute $525,000 to add prior bonds in the amount of $25,000 to the Board of Education Capital Project Athletic Recreation Repairs and Improvements. Amendment number 15 on page 35 and line 12, strike in parentheses $5,500,000 and substitute in parentheses $5 million. In parentheses, to reallocate $500,000 of prior bonds. Amendment number 16 on page 37 between lines 21 and 22, insert the following, HCPS Facilities Master Plan $500,000. In parentheses, to add the Board of Education HCPS Facilities Master Plan Capital Project. Amendment number 17 on page 37 between lines 21 and 22.
That's page 35, sir.
It says 37 in here, but I'll correct it. And I'm going to take a sip. Amendment number 17 on page 35 between lines 21 and 22.
Between line 12.
You had something missing?
Number 17.
I'm on 17, right?
Yeah, but you're reading 18.
I'm reading 17. Amendment number 17 on page 37?
35.
Page 35.
Yeah, 35.
Okay, so I had 37.
Right here, right here. Number 17.
On page 35 and line 12, strike in parentheses $5,500,000 and substitute $5 million. In parentheses, to reallocate $500,000 of prior bonds. Amendment number 18 on page 37 between lines 21 and 22, insert the following, HCPS Facilities Repair Program $500,000. In parentheses, to add the Board of Education Capital Project HCPS Facilities Repair Program in the amount of $500,000. Amendment number 19 on page 35 and line 12, strike in parentheses $5,500,000 and substitute $5,200,000. In parentheses, to reallocate $300,000 of prior bonds. Amendment number 20 on page 37 between lines 21 and 22, insert the following, HCPS Site Improvements $300,000. In parentheses, to add the Board of Education Capital Project HCPS Site Improvements in the amount of $300,000. Amendment number 21 on page 35 and line 12, strike in parentheses $5,500,000 and substitute $5,200,000. In parentheses, to reallocate $300,000 of prior bonds. Amendment number 22 on page 37 and line 24, strike $771,000 and substitute $1,071,000. In parentheses, to add $300,000 of prior bonds to the Board of Education Capital Project Life, Health, and Safety Compliance Measures. Amendment number 23 on page 35 and line 12, strike in parentheses $5,500,000 and substitute $5,118,500 to reallocate $381,000 of prior bonds. Amendment number 24.
500.
381,500 of prior bonds. Amendment number 24 on page 37 between lines 24 and 25, insert the following, Major HVAC $381,500. In parentheses, to add the Board of Education Capital Project Major HVAC in the amount of $381,500. Amendment number 25 on page 35 and line 18, strike $6,458,000 and substitute $6,532,000. In parentheses, to add other funding in the amount of $74,000. Amendment number 26 on page 35 and line 14, strike $44,562,000 and substitute $44,577,000. In parentheses, to add state funding in the amount of 15? Is it 15 million? It says 15,000 here.
15,000.
15,000, okay. Amendment number 27 on page 37 and line 25, strike $3,611,314 and substitute $3,700,314. In parentheses, to add funding in the amount of $89,000 to the Board of Education Capital Project Prospect Mill ES Roof.
Thank you. Now you have another drink. Mr. Clark, Mr. Brown, would you like to come forward? If there are any, answer any questions the council may have? All of yours? Kim?
So council, if there's any questions at all of Ms. Spence, we are going to vote on
these this evening. So I just wanted to make sure there were no questions before we move forward.
And I put them in two separate voting blocks.
Yes, ma'am.
For two different reasons.
Yes, ma'am. What's that?
Can we speak on the one we take off?
No. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Bennett?
I assume these were done in communication with this, like, school system.
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's not a surprise.
No, we do this every year.
Anyone else?
Since you're not going to be here next year, does that mean they're not going to happen again?
You'll have someone else doing them.
I'm not looking forward to that.
Sorry.
Draft to bring you back. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Spence. Again, as Ms. Spence said, we have two voting blocks to work on. We're going to go through, one voting block is 1 through 16, 17 through 24. So may I have a motion on amendments 1 through 24 to Bill? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Council President, I move to approve voting block number one.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Moving to second to approve voting block number one, amendments 1 through 24. Is there any questions? Any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Being seven votes in affirmative, zero in negative, amendments 1 through 24 to Bill 24-014 are hereby approved. Voting block number two, 25 through 27, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve voting block number two.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Moving to second to approve voting block number two. Any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in negative, amendments 25 through 27 to Bill 24-014 are hereby approved. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read in amendments 1 through 4 and 5 to Bill 24-011, sediment control.
Amendments 1 through 4 to Bill 24-11, sediment control introduced by Councilmember Pennman. Amendment number one on page 1 after line 12, insert the following. 214-4, erosion and sediment control plans. B, contents of erosion and sediment control plans. 8, erosions and sediment control plans including. H, a statement requiring the owner slash developer or applicant to contact the department at the following stages of the project or in accordance with the approved erosion and sediment control plan, grading permit, or building permit. 1, prior to the start of each disturbance. 2, upon completion of the installation of perimeter erosion and sediment controls, but before proceeding with any other earth disturbance or grading. 3, on sites where the proposed disturbance in excess of 20 acres grading work may proceed to a subsequent grading unit when at least 50% of the disturbed area in the preceding grading unit has been stabilized and approved by the department, but in no event shall more than two grading units be active at any time. 3, 4, prior to the start of another phase of construction or opening of another grading unit. And 4, 5, prior to the removal of sediment control practices. Amendment number 2 on page 3 after line 11, insert the following. Section 2, and be it further enacted, that projects and sites with preliminary plan or site approval as of the effective date of this act shall not be subject to the 20-acre grading unit limitation imposed by this act. Amendment number 3 on the title page in the second line of the title paragraph after definitions, insert the following. To reappeal and reenact with amendments, section B 8.
That's subsection.
Subsection B 8H of section 214-4, erosion and sediment control plans. And on the same page in the fifth line of the paragraph after unit, insert to provide for work on no more than one grading unit under certain circumstances. Amendment number 4 on page 1 and line 3 after amendments, insert that subsection B 8H of section 214-4, erosion and sediment control plans, B, and it is hereby reappealed and reenacted with amendments. Amendment number 5 introduced by Councilmember Guthrie. Amendment number 5 on page 3 and line 12, strike 3 and substitute 2.
Thank you. Agenda item number 11, call for final reading of bills. Bill 24-012 SOPP amendments, Sheriff's Office Pension Plan 2024, may I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve Bill 24-012.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Has it been moved and seconded to approve 24-012? Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in negative, Bill 24-012, Sheriff's Office Pension Plan Amendments 2024 is hereby approved. Bill 24-013, dilt fees, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill 24-13.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Moving to second to approve Bill 24-013, is there any discussion? Mr. President? Mr. Pennman?
I understand the purpose of these fees. I know when we're having a conversation about revenue growth, we have to consider all options. I think these fees are drastic. I appreciate the work that Mr. Truitt and his team did. But when we're talking about inflation, and, you know, I'll talk about it here in my closing arguments here in a little bit, but when Comptroller Brooke Learman spoke, she talked about the slowing growth due to the high cost of living and housing, housing increasing over 23% in the last three years. Because that, if we put these fees on top of it, it's only going to escalate inflation. Again, I understand why they're being proposed. I understand the gap they're trying to obtain, but I still can't support this fee, which I consider to be another tax. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Mr. Riley?
Again, these fees haven't been increased since year 2000. One of the things that confounds me is sometimes councilman from B wants to spend money other places. Here's a place we can get revenue, and he's not in favor of it. I'm going to be voting in favor of this bill. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Jan Giordano?
20 years is a long time to look at any changes in anything. State didn't have a problem in increasing the cost for you to insure your vehicle starting July 1st, more than doubling some, especially if your vehicle's over 3,600 pounds. So you drive a truck, I drive a truck, that's going to go up. I think when we looked at last year, you know, we paid for the subsidy of the trash from Baltimore County for the increase that we had from the prior year, and then we got a larger bill the following year, and it's a use bill. So if you use trash, you've got to pay for it. You shouldn't expect the county to pay for things that, you know, a use person has to pay for. So the rest of the county doesn't need to pay for the increase in trash. So there's things that are going to go up. You can't just keep holding on to it, making the county pay for everything. You're never going to balance your budget, you're never going to, you're never going to see the light of day. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
You know, I just want to say that this is important, that we do it now. It's something that hasn't been touched on since I was a five-year-old, and it's important, I think, when we look at the services these fees are supposed to cover, at this point, I believe it was shared during our hearing for this bill, that these fees cover less than half the cost of the services, which means that then, I mean, the services still need to be paid for by the county. It means it comes out of your taxes that you pay for someone else's services. So adjusting the fee, and they were very reasonable, shooting for a 90% coverage rate to get us back to a healthier margin on there. It means that the people who are getting the service pay for the service, and it helps the rest of us have our money go to our services. It's a very reasonable adjustment. They looked at Carroll County as the model to look at. Carroll County is hardly the tax and spend capital of the world. I think we all recognize Carroll County is a pretty reasonable place, reasonable budget that they work with, very similar to us. So I think it's just an important, responsible, reasonable thing for us to do.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
No.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one negative, Bill 24-013 is hereby approved. 12 enrollment of bills, Bill 24-012 and Bill 24-013 are certified as being the text finally passed. 13 unfinished business, we have none. 14 new business, Hartford County Public Schools. Now, Mr. Clark, Mr. Brown. We have intercategory operating budget transfers before us this evening?
Yes. Good evening, Council President Vincente, Vice President Giordano, and council members. My name's Eric Clark, Director of Budget for the Hartford County Public Schools. You kind of beat us to the punch on the capital transfer. So after I finish the intercategory presentation, I'll let Mr. Brown address any questions you may have for that particular one. Each year, as part of the budget process, we review in the spring our third quarter projections for final year-end spending. By state law, we can't overspend in any one of the particular categories that we have, administration, mid-level administration, instructional salaries, and so on. So we go through, and I send out an email to all our principals and all our budget managers, and they get back to me with what they're projecting to spend through June 30 in all of those different categories. I compile a big spreadsheet, and then I say, we're going to be tight here, we're going to be close here, we're going to be over here, we've got a little bit of variance in this particular category. So we're looking at moving the funding around within our approved FY '24 budget. So there's really three places that we are looking to be a little bit over, instructional salaries. We're going to be within $200,000 in 200-plus million-dollar category. It doesn't take very much professional development at the end of the year to shoot you over. So we're proposing to transfer $1 million into that particular category. Our non-public placement in our special education category, we're projecting to be over by about $1.85 million. So we're projecting to, we're requesting to put $2 million into that state category 106, which is special education. And then the Board of Education approved some mathematical consumables for our envisioned math program for our K through, I believe it was eight students. And that's going to put us over in that category. That would be a year-end purchase. So we're requesting $1 million to be put into that particular instructional supplies and materials state category. The areas we're asking the funds to be transferred from, we have five different areas, mid-level administration, $250,000, transportation, $750,000, operation of plant communications, $100,000, operation of plant custodial salaries, $400,000, and then fixed charges, health insurance, $2.5 million. 100,000, operation of plant custodial salaries, 400,000, and then fixed charges, health insurance, 2.5 million. So that totals $4 million. I would entertain any questions that you have about the intercategory transfer for the FY '24 operating budget.
Janjordano.
So, good evening, gentlemen. I just want to say one thing. The custodians never get any praise or any anything for the amount of effort and work that they put in and do every day. I remember when I was a student years ago, but, you know, they're always there, they're there late at night and everything, and I just want to echo my appreciation for them publicly.
Absolutely.
And I heard you guys mention that, so that was the only thing I wanted to say. I think they never get accolades and everything, and they're always doing, they're always there, and they're always doing the work, so I appreciate that.
First three people I met when I was a teacher, it's the Lead Secretary, the Head Custodian, and the Food and Nutrition Workers down in the cafeteria. If you keep those three people happy, your life's pretty easy. So I would echo that sentiment.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll go ahead and move this before we speak with Mr. Brown. So may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve intercategory operating budget transfer fiscal year '24.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved second to approve the intercategory transfer. Any questions? Any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in negative, the budget transfer is hereby approved. Mr. Brown.
Yes, so each year, sometimes twice a year, we take a look at our capital projects to see which projects we can close out. So with working with our project team and working with the Budget Office, with the Harford County Government, we see that Bakerfield Elementary Project can be closed out, Havre Grace Elementary Roof Project can be closed out, and the Swan Creek Roof Project can also be closed out. So we're looking at transferring those funds to other projects. At Bakerfield, we have a chiller project that's nearing completion. We'd like to transfer funds and then just hold on to $20,000 to close that project. The Metalville Chiller Project, we would like to close that project out. And then over at Swan Creek, we have that HVAC project where we like to transfer some funds, but to hold back on 27,915,000 to close that project out. The projects that we would like to transfer funds to, we have a facilities repair program and some ADA work that we like to, you know, do at a couple of schools for $500,000 that we like to transfer into that project category. Over at Joppetown High, we're planning for some improvements to the site and stormwater infrastructure to improve the stormwater management on that project. We'd like to transfer $300,000. We've been working with our engineers to scope that project out, and we've got some estimates, and we'd like to, you know, transfer funds so we can move forward with that project. You're aware that we started the design on the Aberdeen High School ticket booth, so they can have a ticket booth similar to what our other high schools have. There's some electrical work that we didn't account for in the original $100,000 estimate, so we'd like to transfer 25,000 in there so that we can move forward with that project. Some of you are aware of some issues that we've had after our high school football games. We'd like to take a look at our high school campuses, do a lighting evaluation, and move forward with some exterior lighting improvements on some of our parking lots. So that is some $300,000 to get that started, and then we'll take a look at some additional work once we complete the evaluation. The facilities master plan, we know that we have enrollment capacity issues. We know we have blueprint initiatives that we need to accommodate. So what we like to do is planning efforts so we can evaluate our buildings and spaces, and then we have Magnolia and Havre Grace Elementary School where we have some capacity issues there. We like to do a feasibility study of those facilities so we can, you know, determine what the needs are there. And the balance of the funds, we like to place in our major HVAC project, is a rolling capital category that we keep going for any unforeseen major HVAC repairs that come up. So that totals a little bit over $2 million that we'd like to transfer from projects that are going to be closed out or nearing, you know, closing into those different categories. So I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone have any questions, Cornell? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
I need to make a motion.
Actually, I need a motion. Trying to get ahead.
Council President, I move to approve the transfer of funds between capital projects.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's moved and seconded to approve the transfer of funds. Now, is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in negative, the summer schedule is hereby approved. Agenda number 17, comments and input from attending citizens, Ms. Dixon.
We have one, Mr. President. Dave Mitchell.
I want to take a line.
Thank you, Mitch. I appreciate that.
But I really have a pitch about what I'm thinking.
We'll talk about it later. Thank you. 16, business from council members. Mr. Bennett.
Hello, good evening, everybody. It's been a busy, busy week. I want to congratulate the graduates from Harford Community College, especially our first two P-Tech students from Joppetown High School who received their associate's degree just a little bit prior to their high school graduation. So that's a really huge accomplishment. But to all those fighting ails who graduated, congratulations. And then also, congratulations to those at Patterson Mill High School who had their graduation today. I was very lucky to attend that. That's my alma mater, which dates me some, as part of the fourth graduating class. Now they're on their 15th this year. So congratulations to all those who celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss Sodles.
Good evening. I wanted to take the time to thank the brave individuals who've given their lives for our freedom on this Memorial Day, and always, we are greatly appreciated. I had the pleasure of speaking at Harford County Sheriff's Office 30th Citizens Police Academy Graduation Exercise last week, and congratulations to the Highland School graduates. An upcoming event on May 31st from 5:00 to 9:00 at Lido's Field in Ripken Stadium, there will be Your Mind Matters Family Wellness Night. So stop out and enjoy some time with the family. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Miss Sodles. Mr. Riley.
Yes, I want to congratulate Janice Rup, IT, 36 years of service here in Harford County. Also, I attended the Narbsville and North Bend Elementary Patriot Programs. That was on Friday, and I also want to thank the men and women that gave their life for this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Janjordano.
Thank you, Council President. I attended the Bel Air Memorial Ceremony at, it's the 39th ceremony put on by the American Legion, and also the Bel Air Community Band does all the hymns for the armed services, which is pretty neat. It's very well-attended. As I said, it's the 39th, so also, congratulations to Highland School, did that this past Friday and today, along with Councilman Pennman, Councilman Bennett, Council President Vincenti, we were at Patterson Mill. And I'm looking forward to my alma mater, Bel Air High School, on Thursday, and seeing the rose arches, which I think they're the only school that does that. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to thank all those honorable service members that paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms. I also want to note, The Addicted Play by Crystal Henzel is coming to several schools in Mount Zion Church, North Harford School, Thursday, May 30th, Thursday, June 6th at Foston High School in Mount Zion Church on Saturday, June 8th. So it's an addictive play written by Crystal Henzel, just really promotes awareness and recovery. She's done a great job on multiple programs for Harford County, to include the Harford County Office of Drug Control Policy. This is also sponsored by the Maryland Center of Art. So if you're interested, it should be out there on the county page. I do want to congratulate the Foston Boys Lacrosse Team, who won their third state championship title for 1A in four years. I think they beat Liberty 15 to 2. So I'm in dialogue with their school leadership to hopefully even get them in and do a proclamation before their summer break. I do want to note a couple of things. We touched on it earlier, as far as the economic outlook. Comptroller Brooke Learman spoke at the Greater Hartford Meeting on May 22nd at the Maryland Golf and Country Club. I wasn't able to attend, but my citizen budget advisor, Brooke Schurcher, was there. And there was a couple of points that I think, again, that we all need to consider. Right now, our labor, there's three job openings for every one person looking in Maryland compared to 1.3 job openings for every one person looking across our country. Again, slowing growth due to high cost of living in Maryland and the lack of housing inventory is a huge problem. Housing supply in Maryland has decreased by over 70% over the last decade, which is causing, you know, 23% increase on housing costs. So it all, you know, fuels the inflation, something that we need to consider going forward. So with that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to congratulate Charles Carney, who got back from Italy in one piece since he went all the way to Italy to ride his subway to get mugged. Can you imagine it? And fortunately, he didn't get hurt. But I ain't going to say this to Tony, but unfortunately, he got bopsided in Italy, so... But glad you're back in one piece anyway, Charlie. On Wednesday, I attended the Teachers' Academy of Maryland Graduation at the Towson Unit up here near the college. That's 16 graduates that actually are from Joppetown. On Thursday, I attended the Harford Community College commencement with a couple, with Pennman and our president and the county executive. And also attended the International Baccalaureate Ceremony at Edgewood High School, where we graduated 26 graduates, and I provided them all with a council citation, along with the Harfords, excuse me, the Homeland Security Emergency Preparedness, had 12 graduates, Academy of Finance, had 96 graduates, along with Teachers' Academy of Maryland, they had from Joppetown, 16 graduates. Harford Academy had seven graduates from Joppetown to Harford County. Harford Academy of Future Link had 10 graduates. So I've been kind of busy with graduations this past week. The Edgewood Joppetown Community Advisory Board Meeting will meet next Monday, June 3rd at 6:30 at the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's Southern Precinct, and County Executive will be our speaker. Also, I want to honor those who served in the military in our wars, who have fought in all our conflicts, and particularly want to honor my father-in-law, who's no longer with us, he died about 15 years ago, who was a World War II vet with a slew of medals that he didn't tell us about till we found out after he passed away, and he had them all in a box, he must have 10 or 12 of them. I think I'll bring them in one time. We mounted them. I think I'll bring them in time so I can show everybody. When he was about 18 or 19, he was in the German Ward, he landed at Normandy also, and he never talked about it much, but we found this nine-page letter that he wrote many years later, when he was about 18 or 19 years old. He wrote a nine-page letter by hand, of course, and sent it back to the folks, and he talked about killing his first German. And that nine-page document, I sent the copy of it to World War II Museum, which is in New Orleans, Louisiana, and they actually have framed that down there in New Orleans. And he talked about where he came around the corner, he was a bazooka guy, and he came around a corner, and there was a German there, and he fired his Luger at him, German Luger, and it misfired, and he was able to kill his German, save his life. So you figure, that's 18 or 19 years old, how things could change an entire life, you know, if that doesn't misfire, you know, he don't get married, he don't have my wife. Well, let me think about that. But you think about how one thing like that, in one event like that, can change a whole bunch of other people's lives in the future. So we certainly miss him, and since then, of course, we moved mom in with us, and she's been with us. And she just turned 98 on Mother's Day, so we hope we can get her to 100 so we can bring her here and give her a little proclamation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. When we say thank you, I just like everyone else here, I'm extremely grateful for the men and women that gave the ultimate sacrifice to protect our freedoms in this country, extremely grateful that my grandson is progressing as well as he is. I want to congratulate all the graduates of the different schools that we've attended over the last week or so. We have North Bend Elementary School for their Patriot Program, Fountain Green for their Patriot Program, C Milton Wright, Edgewood High School, Patterson Mill, Swan Creek, Future Link. I also want to thank and congratulate Janice Rup for her 36 years of service to the IT Department here at the county. She's sorely going to be missed. I want to congratulate Jay Young on his Good Scout Award and recognize him for his 50 years of service at Brown, Brown &amp; Young. And not only that, the financial support that he's given several organizations in our county over those years, so don't want to lose sight of that. And then also, business side, I have to advertise the Adequate Public Facilities Advisory Board Meeting on June 5th, 6:00 PM, second floor conference room. And then finally, I want to thank the sheriff for the opportunity to join them at their DUI checkpoint Friday evening, and then the opportunity to ride along with the deputies again to see firsthand what they do every day to provide that service for us. I think, I think all of us should have that opportunity to see that firsthand, then when we get these funding requests, we fully understand what they're using those funds for. So with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Whoop, excuse me.
One thing I forgot, Maryland was in a national championship game of lacrosse, they lost to Notre Dame, but it was a great season, and I'm a proud Terp, I wore my Terp tie. So anyway, congratulations, Maryland Terrapists.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and close this meeting, adjourn this meeting.